Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for being here. Welcome to September 13th, 2018, regular meeting of the Trinity County Planning Commission. Agenda item number two, public comment. Members of the public may address the planning commission concerning matters within their own jurisdiction or district which are not listed on the agenda and to request that the matter be agendized for a future meeting. No action may be taken on these matters at this meeting. Anyone wishing to address or make public comment, please come forward. State your name for the record.
Darryl Forson, I just want to let you know that I have been working on streaming. We are streaming here tonight. Depending upon the bandwidth that I'm going to give, this room doesn't have the best bandwidth in the library. So, but we are in fact connected up, so we're -- some parts where you're going to be live. But, just so you know, it isn't broadcast to anybody. I haven't told anybody where it is or anything like this, so nobody will be logging in to watch it, but it is going out. So, thank you. Thank you for your attendance. Next meeting.
Lisa Wright, Lewiston. I really wanted to address you in a general sense on cannabis policy. And I think it's apparent in tonight's agenda item as well, but I'm not going to talk too specific. And that's really around how extra complicated Trinity County is making this process. And I understand that you react and respond to what comes out of a secret ad hoc committee that actually should be an open standing committee. But it's putting really the success of this industry in extreme peril in this county. And some of you may want that. And you may be trying to do that. But we're asking you to please not do that, that our county really needs the economic opportunity. And so, instead of making things more complicated, please try to keep it simple. What we really need to do is, in my opinion, is adopt the state regulations, apply good land use and planning to it, which is really your role, not the politicalization which has happened here, and make it simpler for the people who are trying to do business here. As a owner of a company in the area that's trying to get people compliant and trying to bring, you know, more money into the area, it is not easy. And they're going away. Millions of dollars are leaving our community with investors looking at how things are being done. Like I said, I know that some people are trying to do that, but I would hope that this commission is not going to, you know, fall into that. And to push back at times on what you're being delivered by the ad hoc. And ask that this be a more public process and more community involvement and input, and not just accept it. So, I appreciate your time tonight, and thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Wright. Anyone else? If there's none, we will close public comment. Thank you for your comments. We will now to agenda item number three, minutes for August 23rd, 2018. Commissioners?
Does anyone have any changes or amendments?
I'll make a motion to approve, August 23rd, minutes.
I'll second that.
Those in favor of the motion, we sent her to approve?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstain.
Abstain.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously with two abstentions. We go forward on the agenda, old business, non-new business, agenda number four, amended to zoning ordinance, number of section regarding cannabis manufacturing, applicable to Trinity County.
Good evening. Do I need a microphone? You can hear me. Like the staff report says, of course, you've heard the manufacturing ordinance a number of times, and this amendment is coming back to you because the board requested that you discuss and provide recommendations to them about several things. The last time that it was here at the planning commission, there was mention of shared use facilities. And at that time, it was a pretty -- it was a new idea to staff, and we didn't really know that much about it, and even the state hadn't ruled out the regs about that yet. So, now that they have, and we see what it looks like, they asked that you consider that. The other thing that we wanted to look at was what the options could be to requiring a conditional use permit for every single manufacturing license. There are some manufacturing activities that are lower impact, and we started looking at who is in our licensing program and who is likely to be doing different activities and what zoning districts they're in. And we realized also that there could be some people in rural residential that could want to do a really low-impact activity, and it looked like there was no way to really accommodate that. So, that's why the ordinance amendment is coming back to you for that consideration too. So, do you have any questions?
Seems like none at the moment. Any clarifications? No. I believe that this agenda carries a public hearing, so anyone wishing to address the commission with this item specifically in mind, please go forward. State your name for the record.
Matt Hawkins, Douglas City. I would like to strongly urge you guys to adopt this amendment. I think it is vitally important for small farmers such as myself to be able to vertically integrate and do manufacturing in these low-impact manufacturing activities, either in conjunction with a micro-business license or, you know, just as a standalone manufacturing permit. We've got it hard enough here in Trinity County. This is one thing that we could, that you guys could do that would really, really, really help us out. And yeah, I'd just like to put my full support behind that, and please, please, please open this up to unclassified and rural residential and these other zones. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hawkins.
Good evening. Commissioner Adrian Keys of Hayfork. Just one quick question. I'm hoping maybe it's oversight. Just on page three, in the amended approach to use permits in allowable zoning districts, it doesn't list agriculture as zoning in there. I know it does also in the ordinance in the general description for manufacturing, so I can't imagine it's being intentionally excluded here. I just happened to notice while I was looking at this that it's missing there. Thank you. And otherwise, I fully support this, so great. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Keys.
Deidra Brower. I had a couple of comments on here. In section two B, it talks about micro-business, and this is not a micro-business ordinance. And I would hope that we would allow, especially on these lower-impact processes, that they would be allowed in these other zones, even if the people don't want to go all the way for micro-business. It might be a decision that they don't want to do all three of those, you know, three of those things, or they simply need to scale up incrementally and not have, you know, the time or resources to do it all at once. And in particular, currently, ag preserve is an allowable zone, but under this, now they have to have a micro-business, so I would just ask that micro-business be removed altogether. On sections two, four, in the regulations, J, it's mentioned, J, K, and M at least, that the conditional use permit must be obtained prior to any infrastructure or building improvements. I think that should be on the landowner if they want to make that risk and invest that money. All of that stuff takes a long time, conditional use permit process, building, getting plans approved, all of that is just really time-consuming stuff. They could kind of work on them as, at the same time, I think that would be really helpful. And then, on section three pertaining to SEQA, the second paragraph is just kind of confusing. It says that this is exempt from SEQA until, or I guess, the first paragraph, it's exempt from SEQA until July 1st of 2019, and the second paragraph says it's exempt from SEQA because it's an administrative activity. So, that's just kind of confusing. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Brower. Anyone else wishing to make public comment regarding this agenda item? If there's none, we will close public comment. Thank you for your comments. Bring it back to the commission. Commissioners, basically, the board of supervisors asks us to discuss allowable zoning districts, and use permit requires requirements. They seem to be tied in the ordinance, so if it pleases the commission, we can address it section by section for sake of clarity. So, I don't know if there's any comments regarding the amended, which is exhibit B, definitions, if there's anything regarding that.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair. Question, are we doing zoning or the shared use, or both?
Well, we were directed or asked by the board of supervisors to do both, basically.
I mean, on this pass through it, we're doing both?
Yes. If that pleases the commission. Just because they seem, in my opinion, they kind of zebra together. So...
Shared use is kind of its own.
Can I address that? On its own terms, I have no problem.
If we're looking at shared use as its own separate entity, because a shared use facility, I think it makes perfect sense to do that. And I would strongly suggest that we recommend to the board of supervisors that shared use be allowed.
So, we are referring to section two, item D, shared use facilities. And during public comment, some members of the public are referencing several pages. I just want to make sure we're on the same page. I think we should tackle the amended, which is exhibit B. And there's also some comments in the first few pages through the staff reports. Let's just clarify where we're making reference, students. We're all on the same page. I agree to talk about shared use, but can we start at section two A? Sure. Just so we can go in order. Basically, I guess, the first question we do to get the discussion going, thoughts about adding ag forests to the list of allowable zones for non-volatile mechanical methods, type six, type N, and type N state licenses? And if we deem appropriate that instead of having a conditional use permit, that these may be subjected also to a director's instructions?
I see nothing wrong with doing that. Makes perfect sense to me. Ag forest is allowed for cultivation, so I think farmers should be allowed to do some low-impact manufacturing as well.
Absolutely, I do agree with that. I do think that one of the staples of ag forests is a manufacturing base activity. We have reviewed this on several occasions recently, so I do think it has a good fit. Any other comments regarding section two A?
I have no problem with ag forest. That's fine.
Okay, well, let's move on to section two B, which refers to micro-businesses. I personally, I don't understand why micro-business is being piggybacked in the manufacturing ordinance. I remember that when we reviewed micro-businesses, basically, it was a default that either cultivation or manufacturing, you would refer back to the specific ordinance, and, you know, your micro-business type endeavor would refer to those ordinances. I don't understand why is micro-business is referred into manufacturing ordinance? I don't, is this a proper way to push forward an ordinance? I mean, is there a greater, so would there be a greater possibility of this to be legally challenged later because, you know, they are being, you know, mixed in, per se?
Well, I don't think that's going to create any increased risk of a legal challenge. I think this ordinance makes reference to areas which their classification allows certain activities, and to include micro-business here might create some confusion, but I don't think it's a legal issue.
Yeah, and I agree about the confusion because it was my understanding, and perhaps I'm wrong, that it was all cannabis manufacturing facilities, not just those involved in micro-business, that were being looked at as not necessarily needing a conditional use permit, depending on the circumstances.
Correct.
Then, why would it say licensed as micro-business?
That was generated a little bit more, that was the avenue that the ad hoc had been taking. So, it was generated more from their desire to tie those together.
But it doesn't. What it does is limit it to micro. The way you read it, it limits it to micro. Licensed, it says licensed as micro-businesses. And so, that would eliminate anybody who's not licensed as a micro-business. Was that their intent?
I can't speak to that. I don't know if that was the intent with that or not. I understand how you're reading it and interpreting it as you are, and that was what the public comment was as well.
I might offer a speculation on that. I might speculate that if you look at the entire content there, it lists the specific type of extractions that will be permitted. This is the first time rural residential has appeared for manufacturing. I suspect they're trying to limit the types of manufacturing that can creep into rural residential, and as we're constantly reminded, that is to address the small farmer situation, to which the micro-business notion is typically also applied. I'm not sure why they both appeared here, but I'm guessing that the intent is to go ahead and expand in rural residential to the mechanical and low-impact extraction, as it's called here, and the tie into micro-business is to prevent a large-scale manufacturing facility from showing up in rural residential. That's my speculation. I think that's an admirable goal.
Large-scale, but limited to those three types?
If, to, and you tie it to micro-business to avoid large-scale, is my speculation.
But, I mean, still, I mean, if you're talking about a large-scale manufacturing, it would only be limited to these techniques, which are...
Pretty low-impact.
Correct.
Which are low-impact.
Correct. Also, unclassified creeps in, and I still maintain that the proper way to handle unclassified is to classify it, parcel it. Go ahead and zone it properly instead of just continuing them unclassified, but I'm not going to go to the man of that one tonight.
I should add, if I may, I should add that really, they were not suggesting most of these things as recommendations to you, but trying to generate the discussion and put it to you to make those decisions.
I didn't understand what you just said.
They weren't making a recommendation to you. They said, "Well, here's what we're seeing from the conversations that we've had with people." And staff also said, "Hey, we went to them and said, 'There's a bunch of people that are going to be involved in our licensing program for cultivation. They're going to want to do these other activities, and there's no room anywhere to accommodate them to do that.'" So, based on that, they said, "Okay, well, let's put it to you, the planning commission, for discussion purposes. We don't necessarily think that we're not making a recommendation to you, but we wanted them to be discussion items to you so you could make a recommendation to them."
To me, this makes more sense if it reads cannabis manufacturing facilities, including those licensed as micro-businesses.
I guess the philosophical question then is, do you want to limit the, well, again, this is the first time rural residential creeps into manufacturing. If we say, "Sure, let's do it in the rural residential areas," then do you want to make sure that a large manufacturing facility doesn't show up in rural residential as a incompatible use of rural residential? Regardless of the type of extraction, point one, and point two, if we're going to put it in there, is mechanical and low-impact, is this the list? I have no idea if this is the right list. We have no staff study on what types of mechanical and low-impacts there are out there that we might choose from, or the actual manufacturers might recommend that we look at. So, there's this list, so I accept that these, I'm faint, that these are the mechanical and low-impact types of manufacturing. So, if we say, "Okay, those types in rural residential are okay," then is there a way to limit the scope of that creeping into rural? So, if you want to do those types of extractions in an industrial zone, I don't think we need to limit it. If you want to do it in a rural residential zone, then maybe we have to look at limiting it. The question is, how do you do that? And I think what's been proffered in front of us here is that you do it by tying it to micro-business. That's the way I interpret what I've read here.
I would say, one, I would look at it as cannabis manufacturing facilities, licenses, micro-businesses are allowed in those rural residential. You could cut out everything beyond that, and it would make more sense that they're going to allow you to get a manufacturing license for a micro-business in those zoning districts. Zoning districts, if you're not in those zoning districts, you can get a type six or NP in all these other districts. So, I don't think it's really, it's not really restricting anyone. It's allowing micro-business in these other four zones.
Actually, I think I agree. And I think that the ag forest and the ag preserve are redundant under paragraph B because you can do them under paragraph A.
Indent.
Right?
Yeah.
At any scale. So, there's no point in tying low-impact and mechanical to those four specific zones because you can already do those in, under paragraph two A, you can already do it in any of those other zones. Is that true? Did you read it that way, Leslie?
I refigured it.
I think Dan called that one out properly. Which says, so what's new about paragraph B is it introduces rural residential and unclassified. And if the intent is, "Okay, in those zones, we're going to let manufacturing creep in there if it's this mechanical and low-impact stuff, okay?" And then specifically, then do you limit the scale? That's, to me, a bit relevant point there. I'm okay, actually, with mechanical and low-impact going into those zones. The question is the scale of the operation in those zones, because you can already do it on any scale in the other zones.
I can live with that.
With what?
With, not, without it.
So, you think...
Leaving it the way it's written.
Okay, and I'm suggesting we maybe, I don't, I can go either way. I'm leaving ag forest and AP in there. I don't see...
I was going to say, I would suggest we get rid of those, just so there isn't the confusion that we're not tying this manufacturing license to a micro-business, but tying ag forest or rural residential and unclassified to a micro-business license.
Right. Yeah, we don't want to introduce that confusion with ag preserve and ag forest.
However, if there was a way to limit the scope, then we could essentially add ag forest and ag preserve.
Well, I think...
Ag forest and ag preserve.
But these are for like a full-scale blown operation. These are for a micro-business.
For micro-businesses.
Yeah, against scope. It would be...
Essentially, if you're cutting those out, you're cutting those zones for...
We could limit micro-business possibly.
Well, here's what I'm not understanding. If you are, let's suppose you want to open up a manufacturing operation using low-impact, et cetera, and you happen to be in an ag forest.
And you have a micro-business license.
Regardless of whether you have a micro-business. Let's say you don't have a micro-business license. Doesn't paragraph two A allow you to go ahead and do that?
I would say yes, but we can...
Doesn't paragraph, it says right here, "You can do non-volatile mechanical cannabis, type six, et cetera, in any of the zones listed in two A." That would include low-impact and any other form of type six.
Would that cover micro-business? Okay, then you're right.
I think that if we strike those out, basically, what we're doing is tying rural residential and unclassified to micro-businesses, not the other way around.
Right.
I'm okay with that. I agree with that. One thing I do, I am concerned, though, is about these very specific types of low-impact extraction, rosinose, mobile hash, and dried sipping. Now, I mean, there are new products and new ways to extract coming out of the market constantly. YouTube and many other, you know, blogs and whatnot, they're filled with them. So, what happens when some other low-impact comes out, are we going to amend again? Like, I don't really like being so specific about these certain types, like on the pack package, we receive what types of extractions on particle two. They've mentioned one of these, you know, that it's chemical extraction, mechanical extraction, volatile substance, non-kyberharden, night, non-hydrocarbon base. I have not had the time to do research on these, but I'd like to see this kind of mimic more state regs, more a vague approach that's open to bus fillings, not being so specific that if you're not doing one of these three, then you're out. You cannot do a micro-business or a low-impact, or especially in rural residential, unclassified. So, I do have a problem with that because the possibilities in the market now are, you know, it's a myriad of different options, and so I don't want to just be limited to this alone. I do appreciate the intent of adding rural residential and classified and these low-impact. I don't, I don't know, how can we, I'd like to, you know, possibly, if this goes back to the board, to kind of tidy that up, or like, you know, mimic more state regs, you know, not be so specific on just these certain three types.
Does the state identify a low, does it use the term low-impact, mechanical or low-impact?
I did not.
In terms of definitions?
It does specify mechanical, but I did not read it anywhere where it says low-impact.
Okay, I think the county's intent is to make sure they are, generically speaking, If you can find mervage which gives the flexibility to the planning department to determine, and if a new YouTube video comes out to show something that, what's the term the law uses? A reasonable person would say agree is low-impact, and the planning department agrees with that, then I think they should have the authority to go on with that. And if they are unsure of it, and they want to kick it up to a conditional use permit, then we can... then we can listen to testimony on why it is low impact. I think that, I think flexibility is okay. I have no issue with that.
Do we know how these three methods were arrived at?
Yes.
So Kristi Anderson, of course, is with Environmental Health and that's why she's here. Just give to this.
So I think the original issue came about because the state regs have ethanol processing under non-volatile. And so that in a rural residential area, I, I personally, I think we could all agree with this. That could be an issue. Mechanical, however, I, I don't see a huge issue there unless they're using a lot of heat or open flames. So coming from a safety perspective, that's my take on it. So mechanical might be your route to keep it open. But bubble hash does use cold water and there's not a bubble hash in there. So we don't want to remove that from the, and I think that's where that explains all of those options. That's just my take.
What if you, what if we were to say, low impact extractions such as
that's what I was going to say.
rosin pressing, et cetera, verbiage here. Or others as approved by, I guess, the planning director, who again has the option of punting on it and sending it up to the planning commission if he's uncomfortable that it meets the criteria. The reasonable person.
Definitely favor that.
I think you could probably just leave it as such as, that leaves the open end for others as long as they're, they're-
The director always has the action of punting up to the planning commission. So if he's uncomfortable with some new method on YouTube, then he can just say, I'm not making any decisions.
Definitely favor that. So any other discussion regarding two A? We agree with ag forest. Two B, scratch ag forest and ag preserve, leave rural residential classified, low impact, instead of limiting to, we change that to such as? And, and leave the micro business aspect of it? Or as Commissioner Stewart suggested, can make cannabis manufacturing facilities, including?
I think we should leave it licensed.
Yeah, because if we do including, then that means-
We're, because we're, we're restricting it to micro businesses and rural residential.
And a classified.
If there's no further comments on that section, we'll move on to section two C. Type seven licenses. I think that we've discussed that. I'll find what, how it stands.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, which section did you move on to?
The following section, section two C.
Yeah, there's no changes there.
First, type seven, so there's no changes. So moving on to section two D, which specifies shared use facilities.
So just to be clear for my education here, the shared use class S is a license. That license is obtained by the, let's say, the user or the farmer who wants to go to the common facility. That farmer gets a shared use license, goes over to the manufacturer's facility, the manufacturer's type six licensee, set up the kitchen. And these farmers out here each go apply and get a type S and they can all go and use this type six licensee's kitchen. That's the model we're talking about. And that type six can, kitchen can go anywhere, type six can go and plus rural residential. It's essentially what this list is. Okay, so that's the model. And what, okay, I'm trying, what's the impact of the appropriate use permit sections four J to M on this specific? So when it gets kicked from director to planning commission, the conditional use permit? It's four J through. So if you're doing type seven, and type sevens, are they eligible for S type of usage?
Yes.
Okay, so then they would be conditional use permits?
Yes.
Four K says six, seven, or N licensees who wish to register as a shared use facility shall obtain a conditional use permit. So four K seems to say where four D says, subject to first obtaining appropriate use permit, four K seems to say, now you have to have a conditional use permit.
For the facility.
Isn't that what four D is talking about, the facility?
I would feel like that type S license isn't going to fall under director use permit.
Not the S.
It's the facility.
The facility is a six or seven or?
Yeah.
That's it, right, it's a six or a seven.
So who, who initiates the shared use facility? Is it the primary?
Yes, the primary licensee is the one that operates the facility.
And, and how does that person? The person applies for conditional use permit perhaps as a manufacturer and somehow under checks a box that says, by the way, it's a shared use facility? Or how does it turn into a shared use facility?
No, the shared use facility, that is, it's, they register that site. That site itself is not licensed. It's the primary licensee that has to have a license to operate the shared use facility.
Which is a premises under the license. So that license is attached to that premises and that premises then becomes a shared use facility if he's, so registers. Okay, and that's what D is talking about, is where you can do that.
D.
Four D, four, section?
Two D.
I beg your pardon, two D.
Okay.
Section two D. And whatever, I'm on the page, I'm on this page. It's in red in my copy. Says the facility may be permitted in the following zones. So we're talking about the facility. Am I reading this right? Okay. According to the appropriate use permit, four K seems to say it's got to be a conditional use permit.
Then the appropriate use permit would be a conditional use permit. We could say it there. Sure. Yes.
You're not a lawyer, are you? You're starting the topic. Okay. I just take introducing confusion by-
No, all shared use facilities, the way that we had drafted it, require a conditional use permit.
Okay, got it. This says the appropriate use permit, which is going to be conditional. Okay, I'm okay with it. It'll be on there.
So a, a shared use facility doesn't, can do other things than just the micro business, low impact. But they can also do those for other people who are going to get a type S. Because if we're restricting it to micro businesses to allow it in rural residential.
That's, so the, what's, the low impact is all about putting anything into rural residential. Shared use is, so I'll set that one aside. Shared use is, any manufacturing facility can set up a shared use facility at their premises and go get a register for that. Of, for any type of manufacturing, six, seven, any of it. So this has nothing to do with the rural residential low impact, except it does the rural residential.
Except that's not rural, right?
Well, so in the rural residential, he's got to apply that rule.
And I would still be like- Rural residential can only be what his previous system-
I would still have an issue with allowing shared use facility in rural residential. You know, I mean, even at micro business level, a shared use facility, you're, it depends on what rural residential you're in. I guess we could, that could be addressed under a conditional use permit.
I think that's a use permit.
I saw that in type, in L, in four L, it talks about, you know, employees and the trips per week and the, da, 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 to try to minimize the impacts.
Well, that, that would, wouldn't-
Rural residential.
That would be for director use permit anyway, so that wouldn't apply here. It would be, they'd have to go for a conditional use permit, which we could address that, but I would have, I would, I would think it would be-
Well, I think the model would be as Commissioner Stewart has brought up in the past, she's going into the brownie business. And she's going to in fact invest in the kitchen and go get the license for making, do the manufacturing extraction or infusions for brownies. And she's going to build a commercial kitchen and we're all going to go get type S licenses and use her kitchen, kitchen to make brownies.
I'm only going to make my brownies on Wednesdays and somebody else can make theirs on Thursdays.
I think that's the small business shared use example.
If it was tied to micro businesses, I would be, I would be okay with it, going through a conditional use permit, but there are places where just having the extra traffic could be an issue in a rural residential.
And that's the conditional use permit, but, but because it's in rural residential, it fault, this, as Mr. Matthews pointed out, we're doing the low impact stuff. It's got to be micro business. And then the use permit process will limit the amount of traffic that's associated with that sort of operation.
Exactly. It should not be an issue.
I'm okay with it.
So we, so the changes I see would be under two D, first sentences. So instead of saying all the zone districts, first obtaining the appropriate use permit, we want to change that to a conditional use permit? Make that specific, is that? Is that the consensus or appropriate stands?
I would, I would think it would make it clearer if we said a conditional use permit instead of saying C or J through M so that you have to go find another section.
Or you could just say, obtaining a use permit is, is specified under four K. If you only want to say it in one spot, but again, it's saying the appropriate use permit and that verbiage is used throughout in here to mean, well, it's either going to be director or conditional. Except in this case, it can't be director. So it's misleading to leave that open, I think.
I would say make it a conditional.
I agree, we should make it a conditional.
I agree.
Any other comments on section two D?
Does that mean you'd like to strike the C section, just in it, first obtaining a conditional use permit here? Yes, and then strike first.
Or first, first select to section four. Okay, where's the words, where'd you actually say it again? Either way. I'm not an ordinance writer.
Okay, well, moving on to section two E, which is amplifies the restrictions and legal boundaries of where the manufacturing facilities can take place.
Is this actually a change?
No, it looks exactly the same as the previous one.
Yeah.
Since that here was in blue, I assume it was-
No, that's what I'm reacting to. It's in blue. Was this changed? I think this is in the-
I refer to a version one, it's the-
It's just the same. It doesn't include hay fork, so I'm happy.
Okay, then moving on to section three. License types available, the best that's smart for us to discuss. I don't know if the commissioners have any comments regarding this or any clarification.
So it's three E, just the wording of it. Type S licenses are available for licensees who are authorized to conduct manufacturing operations at a registered facility. And may be used for, then for their own type N or type P license. I said, the idea here is that the type S person wants to use a sheriff, so it goes and gets a type N so they can make brownies, they're going to do infusions. Then they get a type S so they can go use the other person's kitchen.
Yes.
All right, so when it says the licensees who are authorized, I, maybe I'm just reading too much into it, but it says the licensees who are authorized to conduct operations, they're getting authorized by getting a type S license.
Okay, I see.
See what I'm saying?
So state type S licenses are available to conduct manufacturing? Just take out four licensees who are authorized to?
Yeah, I take that, yes. And for my own education, what does it mean, the non-volatile extractions with butter or food grates? What is that? Do you actually do an extraction with butter or you put it into butter?
Yeah.
As much.
Yeah, basically.
What, yes, I'm sorry, you asked to what?
You, you can, you can put your product into oils and essentially heat them or just leave them, I don't know if you can just leave them sit there for a while and they'll absorb some of the reactive ingredient, but, but I believe that that's the case. And then you can make your, your product out of what you have extracted your stuff out of.
Okay, I'm just confused about what, Kristi, help me out. What is it we're trying to do with the wording that's here?
This one's a little new to me as well. I think what it's trying to say is that once you have made cannabis butter or something like that, you cannot therefore go and sell it to the licensee without. You can infuse it in your own products, but you can't package it and give it to somebody else. That changes the way that things are regulated when you start a full selling. And that's my speculation on that.
And they've called out butter or food grade oil, is that?
Well, all that is, is, is the way of, of getting your, your concentrate so that you can use that in your final product.
You're buying butter or you're making butter.
Well, you, yeah, you're, you're making, you're, you're infusing, you're infusing the butter with, with your, your cannabis. And then, and then you're using that butter to manufacture brownies or whatever. Or, or you're using an oil to make something that you could rub on your skin perhaps. Or as an oil that you can use in, in baking some other, other goodie.
I guess I'm reacting to this in the same spirit as what Richard specified, you know, where we went into non, I mean, low impact and got specific about, it's too specific.
I agree.
Or is this the entire world of what you could do, butter and food grade oil?
Yeah, no, it's, and it, and it shouldn't be because if you're, if you're not planning on making something that you're going to eat, then, then you don't, you shouldn't necessarily have to use food grade oil if it's going to be a lotion.
I, I think the point of this part, and I could be, I could be mistaken, but I think the point of this was to allow solvent, well, not solvents, but a mixture of non-mechanical ways of, of extracting that. That's just strictly, you know, speculation on my part. I think that that was the reason for that.
I think, as I'm reading this, section C talks about type N license and it does talk about these are, these are edibles and these are packaging requirements. So it's giving the use of a shared facility for packaging and these edibles under the infusions for oils, created edibles, beverages, capsules under the type N license. So the fact that it's specifying type N and P, both of those are directed towards edibles.
Okay.
But it's tying it to the ability to do that as a shared facility.
So, so so a shared facility would not be able to make a lotion, say, something that's not edible?
I don't, I don't know that any other section of this would prevent that from happening. I think this section is directly addressing food products and packaging.
Okay, okay.
Food products, which is kind of a separate entity under the state regulation.
So I, the, one thing strikes me again where we're overloading one paragraph with something that's covered elsewhere. So in order to do infusions and make an edible, I have to have a type N license.
True.
Look, or, or better, but let's add an infusion license. Okay. To use your kitchen to do that, I've got to have a type S license. But I still have to follow the rules under type N. If I'm making something that's food grade, everything down the thing has to be food grade. It's got to be done in a commercial kitchen that's food grade. If you're making hand lotion in your facility, you don't need to be food grade. But if I'm making brownies in your facility, now the whole thing has to upgrade to food grade. I can't use your facility if you, unless it's commercial food grade facility. I think type, the fact that I have to have a type N says I've got to have all of the food grade stuff if I'm making food, no matter where I make it. So restating it under type S is confusing. It's like, all type S says is I've got to use your facility and your facility's got to be food grade if I'm, because my type N licenses, I better be doing this in a food grade facility, mine or yours. So I think, I really think going off into the butter and the food, in this section, that's kind of creeping into the rules under type N, right? Where I have to follow those rules in the first place to make brownies. And this is under the section where we're saying what type S is good for.
I think what they're, my take on this is what they're trying to do is to allow a small amount of non-volatile extraction also under type six. Because it says type NP and non-volatile life extractions with butter and food grade oil. It's not saying that you can only do food grade oil and, and butter in your shared use facility. It's saying you can only do those type six or non-volatile extractions. It's, it's limiting that under a shared use facility instead of using the state guidelines for, or whatever you want to go with. It's how I read that.
I think that we should actually defer to state guidelines because in fact, beginning with extraction, that, that is written word by word under the, we're just state guidelines. And in page of our package 137, it says a type S license may conduct the following operations: infusion, which is a type N, if I'm correct.
Yeah.
Packaging label, which is a type E. Then extractions with butter, food grade oils, which is written here in our ordinance. I think we would be better off perhaps just ending this where it says type S licenses are available to conduct manufacturing as a registered shared facility, period. And then let the, let the rest deal with the state guidelines.
State guidelines.
It's written clearly there.
Yeah.
Instead of.
Instead of restating state guidelines, I'm fine with that.
Yeah, me too.
Where's the period going?
Council comfortable with that?
Yeah, I think at this point, if you're, if you're referencing the license type and you're not putting special restrictions on it, it's going to default to the state.
Period, then is that shared use facility?
Yeah.
I like simplified.
Any other comments or suggestions on Section 3A through D? We definitely just now will move on from Section 4 under regulations. The one changes I see here are the change from conditional to appropriate and references Section 4 J through N. If there's any concerns up to there, let's go, let's go Section 3. I, I am curious about the type S license now because, you know, just moving forward quickly and not jumping all over this, but going to fees, which is Section 5F, sees fees for type six license, type seven, type N and type P. There's no shared use fee or, or as long as you have these licenses, you can just make an agreement with the primary or how, how does that work? How do you, how do you, how do I become, if I have one of these licenses, a shared use holder? What is the, the, the bridge there?
You have to register.
Yeah. With the county, that's it.
Wow.
You already have to have a license, so you shouldn't.
Paid fees for that, huh?
Yeah.
That's kind of what happens with other kitchen, like all these kitchens, for example. There may be five people writing from that kitchen. They all hold their own license and then they, it's covered. Does, does that make sense?
Yes. Thank you for the clarification.
Where are we at?
We're basically the entirety of Section 4. There's, there's a lot, there's a lot there.
Are there any additions or someone suggest changes? For L, A, 3? I think if we should, once again, such as, instead of limiting to.
Extractions such as. Yes, I agree.
I know we've done, we discussed this one before, but where is the 6,240 hours coming? L sub B, for L sub B. You can have three full-time employees or not more than 6,240 employees.
Three times 2,000, 2,080 hours is full-time.
2,080?
Yeah. It's 173.3 times 12 is 2,080. That's full-time employment is 2,080 hours.
Okay, so that's three full times. I have any comments on Section 4?
Outside of that one change, I'm looking for.
Do you have a question here under M, which is the last one? I don't know if I'm reading this correctly. It says all types, all type six P and type N applicants that do not meet the requirements outlined in Section 2 subsection 4L. Is that correct? Would it be Section 4L? Okay, so that, so that's. No, I know, but this is Section 2, which says, I think it's, it might be a type of. 4L.
There is Section, it's Section 2.
It is Section 2 under application.
So it's Section 2 subsection 4 subsection L.
Any other comments for Section 4?
We did have some public comment about before starting operations, including infrastructure and building improvements, they have to get a conditional use permit. I think if you have a building permit for your infrastructure or you're not going to have a creating permit, but if you have, if you're permitted to build that infrastructure, I don't think that you should be required to wait until you get your conditional use permit to do it. Because if, if it's part of the, if it's part of your plan, your application, and you're required to have this building and you go get your building permit, it would be, you may not get your conditional use permit. That should be at the discretion of the owner, whether they want to start building that stuff or wants it permitted. I would think, I mean, it could change the outcome of their conditional use permit, but that should be at their, at their discretion. I don't think that you should, I mean, I, council could weigh in on that. I don't think, I mean, I don't see how that could be, how you could really stop somebody from building a permitted structure if they want to get that license, you know?
But I don't think there would, would necessarily be a, a reason to not grant a building permit, but it, it could be part of the conditional use permit process of whether there's going to be approval for that type of a business to be constructed.
Yeah.
In general, plans would be provided and if the intent of the building is known, the processes can generally run together so that you don't have a lawsuit later on.
Yeah, well, that was one of, kind of what I'm, I was going for is I'm not, I'm not saying that, it, it just seems to me that if they're in the process of, if they're, they've applied for a conditional use permit and the way this reads, it could be any infrastructure on the property. What if they want to build their house at the same time? You know, you, you have to wait to build your house or to build a road onto your property until after your conditional use permit is, is done. That's the way this reads. And it seems like you're, you're putting a lot of weight on that conditional use permit where somebody might want to, it's like, even if they don't get the conditional use permit, they don't get to conduct business, they might still want to build the driveway and put the house there. So I, I would think that stuff like that should be at the discretion of the landlord or not of the conditional use permit. But I don't know how you would write that in.
I think you cross the line into a gray area. You can't build a gas station until you get a use permit for a gas station.
No.
So if you're building a facility that has a unique skin it that would require approval on the nature of the construction for the business, you may have to wait.
Yeah.
If you're building a metal box, it's going to be a warehouse for a distribution center, you can probably get a permit for building a metal box. But you may have to change it to comply with a conditional use permit subsequent. And you also run the risk of the argument we're going to get that, well, I've already invested in this, I don't want to change, which we hear a lot.
I, I think that's the distinction is if the purpose of the building or the building itself has a unique characteristic and the example is perfect of a gas station where part of your infrastructure is the barrier in, in round tank.
Yep.
You generally will see those two run together.
So.
What if you were to add language that refers to.
Specific to.
Specific to.
The, the operation.
Yeah.
And I would be fine with that.
That, that makes sense.
I, I, that would be fine. It's just the way it's written, it seems like it, you're limiting somebody's use until they're approved.
Well, especially because it mentions infrastructure because like you said, if they, they want to put in a new driveway to their home.
Or.
Yeah.
Specific to M? Okay, any other comments on Section 4? Let's move on to the next section, Section 5. The appropriate S, which is the only one that's changed. Move on to Section 6, including conditionals, because it has been added as A and E, subsection D, A and B.
Once again, in A, I would say that including infrastructure and building improvements is specific to the use.
New use.
Yeah.
Any other comments? I guess in line with the specific to, I guess, Section 7, A subsection C, so that it engages in several building improvements, again, specific to the license. So we'd like to move on to the global ordinance. So you want to make a motion or bring up one last item, correction, clarification needed?
Maybe one quick clarification for staff, why is 100 feet highlighted? Under 34J type set license. The facility must, must be a setback, must be setback 100 feet of all property lines. I, I was just curious why that 100 feet was highlighted if those.
Because there was, I think that that really should appear as a want to, as a discussion I have, the 100 feet. They didn't know, the ad hoc committee did not, we didn't, how did it get set for?
I remember in fact that, this was previous, I remember in fact that when, when this was originally presented to us, the number was 200.
200 feet.
We, we deemed it was excessive.
Right.
We reduced it to 100 feet.
Yes, I remember that discussion.
Unless there's further ideals of reducing that.
I can't remember all of them. Why look into that discussion with L?
I, I just remember we had the discussion and that's what we decided on.
That is what we decided.
So. That would be.
I'm okay to leave it as is. I mean, I don't really, I think it's a meritorious discussion. I don't have numbers or statistics or calculations in front of me to try to argue that.
I may agree with the way it is. Sort of.
Ken, I have not been able to write to keep track of the changes. Could you read the changes?
So, I have one more.
Okay.
Section 3. Question was raised earlier about the two different ordinance is cited under CEQA. I would note that in the cultivation ordinance, the first paragraph there, the 26055 citation is used. In the, let's say the distribution ordinance, the 15378B5 citation is used. This is the first time I think we've seen both citations brought up. And I'm wondering what's evolving with CEQA.
It's not uncommon for an, an ordinance or a change to be deemed under more than one section of CEQA. And if it is, if there are two sections that you can find an exemption under CEQA, you refuse to hold it. So I, I was not involved in the drafting of this ordinance and I'm not sure exactly what triggered both sections. But county council deemed that both sections were applicable exemptions under this code section, under this ordinance. this code section, under this ordinance. So it wouldn't, it wouldn't be unusual to see that.
No, it's not, it's not the unusual, it's the change from, I said, I'm curious about.
And, and that may well be the changes that have been put in here with the type S license. There may be something specific with the type S license that I'm, I'm not familiar with tonight to, to answer that question, but in general, if there are more than one exception, we will lay them into the SEQA section.
Okay. I'll take a stab at it.
Diana, I want to have somebody read back the changes to her, since she hasn't been able to write them down. It's going to be hard to.
That'd be part of the motion, right? That's why, why I wanted to.
So keep me honest.
Okay. Well, I can't because I couldn't write them down.
I would move that we recommend approval of this to the board supervisors with the following amendments.
This is a practical matter based on the number of changes that have been, um, made. And it would be my suggestion to reopen public comment just to address those changes.
Done.
Um, because those, those changes weren't proposed prior to a public comment.
Okay. In light of council's suggestion to reopen public comments, based on the changes suggested, we will reopen public comment. Anyone wishing to address the commission regarding the changes we have proposed, please come forward, say your name to the record. If you think that there's not, we will close public comment. Thank you. Commissioner McHugh, if you would, please.
Okay. I would move that we recommend to the board supervisors, they make the changes to the manufacturing ordinance represented in exhibit B with the following amendments to the draft. First one I see is in section two, application, subsection two, allowable zoning districts, paragraph B. We changed the words which is limited to to be such as. And we deleted ag forest and ag preserve from that list. So for clarity, that will read cannabis manufacturing facilities, licenses, microbusinesses, and involving type six mechanical or low-impact extraction such as rosin processing, et cetera. Uh, listing only rural residential and unclassified. Same subsection two, paragraph D, we changed the, um, the appropriate use permit to read a conditional use permit, striking C-section, such and such. Subsection three, types of licenses available, subparagraph E, we put a period after the quoted shared use facility and deleted the rest of the paragraph.
And we also, for licensees who were authorized.
Uh, and we took out.
For licensees.
Uh, after the word available, we took out for licensees who are authorized. So it reads now state type S licenses are available to conduct manufacturing operations as registered shared use facility, as, at a registered shared use. Under, um, paragraphs four, regulations, paragraph, or subparagraph J, we added at the end of the first, the blue amendment there, uh, where it says including infrastructure and building improvements, we added the phrase specific to the use. Under paragraph L, just below, subparagraph A three, under where it reads utilizes extraction methods, we changed limited to to such as. The change I have is in paragraph six, E.
And.
What is this?
Um, specific to use and M.
I beg your pardon.
M.
Under paragraph four, M, the paragraph ends with phrase specific to the use. Next one will be subparagraph six, E. Under, subparagraph A, uh, the sentence ending including building or, infrastructure or building improvements, we insert the same phrase, specific to the new use in this case. This is regarding changing use. So specific to the new use. And under paragraph seven, denial, subparagraph A, subparagraph C, we insert the same phrase, the applicant engages in site or building improvements specific to the use. That's the summary of the changes and that's the motion.
One second.
Motion initiated by Commissioner McHugh. Second by Commissioner Stewart. Those in favor, favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Um, next item on the agenda, agenda item number five, matters from the commission.
Schedule. I guess that'll be from staff.
Okay. I don't have any. Agenda item number six, matters from staff.
Schedule.
On the two segments, we don't have anything on the agenda at this time. However, we're going to wait before we cancel that meeting. We may have one, one item that doesn't have to be noted as long as we typically notice, but we have yet to get the answer. So we're not canceling it tonight, but we may.
Could we encourage staff to consolidate meetings? One item meetings is tough.
We tried that last time and she said forget it.
So one item meetings are a little.
Yeah, I know. It's a, uh.
The one item, item meeting tonight is good.
Yeah, tonight, this is different.
But it might be a lengthy one.
Yes.
Any other matters from staff? It is eight eighteen, meeting is adjourned.